It's seven o'clock, so I'll call for this joint meeting of the town council and the planning commission. First, I'll move to approve of the agenda. The agenda, first I'll move to approve of the agenda. I would like to make one change, just to reverse the order of two items that are on our agenda. So we can do the property associated with the spa first. So it comes to be on your, on your, on the top council's agenda. So we'll just reverse the order of those. Assuming everyone's okay with that change. I'll move to approve of the agenda with that, with that change. Is that in favor? Cynthia, say no. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will refuse myself since the agenda is with property. And the reservation.
Madam Chair, I would like you to look at the commissioning section.
Thank you. I will open the planning commission. And there are the three members, David Langton, Amy Bruce, Carol Ann, and Steve. And we have a forum. I would ask that we approve the agenda again with taking the number B of the public hearing first. That's the property by the spa. Can I have support for approving the agenda?
Aye.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So I will open a public hearing, which is the request of the Inn at Little Washington, L C, for 0.44 acres is to change the zoning district category for the property at 371 and 389 Main Street, Washington, VA 22747, tax map ID number 20A-1-15 and 20A-1-16, from the current rural residential to village mixed use. The request is being considered in accordance with Town of Washington, Washington zoning ordinance Article 9 amendments, Section 1, Paragraph 1.1C. The property is located in the rural residential and historic zoning district category. And before I call on the public, I would just say, we have, since we have two items to get through, if we could limit people's comments to four minutes would be helpful. We have had two written submissions from Wendy Mudd, Mo Doc, and Joan Platt, and they've been entered into, into the record. So that doesn't mean you can't speak to them, but they will be also entered into the record. I'd like to start by calling on a representative from the inn to explain the main points of the rezoning request.
Thank you. So the plans you have are similar to your first one. I'm Brad Aldridge. This is David Langton from the Cass Engineering. We prepared the site plan for the two project sites. I'll be talking about both of those unless we're ready.
Yeah, could you just talk about the first side of the spa?
Yes.
And then we'll have a separate public hearing for the second one.
Okay. So the spa site is located at Main Street and Harris Hollow Road. The existing building at the corner there is remaining. We'll change there. It's the existing gravel parking lot where the spa and parking lot, the existing gravel parking lot being removed and a new building or lot will be added. Part of that is to change the zoning from the rural residential to the V and U zone, so that it's all one consistent property, rezoned property. You know, that? Any final questions there?
Okay. Wait, wait. We'll move now. The way we're going to do this is open to the public to have comments, forum against. Then we close the public hearing. And then the planning commission discuss amongst ourselves and asks any question. And then the planning commission sees if they're able to make a recommendation to the towns. And then we move to the second public hearing. So this is the time to hear from the public.
Just so that I'm clear, this point is only about the spa? And then you'll open it up for public comment again for the other one?
Yes, there are two separate public hearings.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me?
Yes, please, Joan.
Is this about the spa or the property the spa is upon?
This is about the 0.44 acres that is currently behind the gravel parking lot. Parking lot itself is already zoned village mixed use. There is land behind that is currently, I can interpret as the land belonging to the proprietor of the inn. It's to the right of his driveway. That the request is that 0.4 acres of that be included in the village mixed use to make it one, one zoning designation.
My only question was, is there was an expansion plan originally across, you know, behind the inn originally, which had the spa and the pool, et cetera. What happened to that, that the spa could have stayed on there and that parking lot remained as it is?
I, I believe that that was not practical to build it there from an engineering point of view and from a financial point of view. But I don't know if anybody here was involved in that earlier. But that was never formally presented to the town. And nothing was ever tabled to that.
And the reason I ask is because on those plans, it basically says at the bottom, "All parking to be valet." Valet parking will be at, you know, the name Harris Hollow. So I assume that's where everything is valet. But so it's not feasible to do that.
No, I believe there will be some parking spaces where there were regular parking spaces behind the, what we think of as the old health center, which is now a restaurant, restaurant and two accommodation apartments upstairs. There will be some behind that with a wall hiding it from Harris Hollow.
Did you know that that old building used to be Stewart's Bank? The first thing I've been on space. I just wanted to share that level of that.
I don't think I did know that, do I? Here used to be the cash store a bunch of times.
Exactly. I see you got its own fan page on Facebook, the cash store.
Well, thank you for sharing. Are there any other questions related to this rezoning? Well, if not, I will close the public hearing and ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions. We end all for each other.
I'll just clarify this, the reason for the zone, for the rezoning on this case is so that the front part of the property matches the back part of the property.
Correct.
Do you anticipate any use? It would be by right use, only, it's a village mixed use only by right, use by right?
For the spa building and parking lot? Or for the spa building, it needs to be village mixed use? For that to be consistent, the parking lot and special use?
I believe that that section, part of the 0.44 acres, will be devoted to stormwater runoff, which requires engineering underneath the, underneath the land.
I don't have any question other than just to follow what I said. It's, this is a piece of the spa.
Correct, correct. The rear.
And the, okay.
The vast majority of the lot in front is already village mixed use.
Yes, I can see that.
So that's just the 10.44. So if, if, if the planning commission doesn't have any more questions, and I don't have any questions, do I have a motion?
To allow the, to move forward with the rezoning to the little.
To recommend a recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 So we are moving forward the recommendation to the town council to approve the zoning for the 0.44 acres in zoning district category, property 371 and 389 Main Street, tax map ID number 20A-1-15 and 20A-1-16, from the current rural residential to village mixed use. And with that, I would, I would declare the first public hearing closed. And I will go to the next public hearing. The next public hearing is a request of the Inn at Little Washington, L C, D B A, the Inn at Little Washington, for 2.0152 acres to change the zoning district category for the property at 309 Main Street, Washington, Virginia, 22747, tax map ID number 20A-1-34 and part of 20A-1-37A, from the current village residential to village mixed use. The request is being considered in accordance with the Town of Washington zoning ordinance, Article 9 amendments, Section 1, Paragraph 1.1C. The property is located in the village residential and historic zoning district category. And with that, I will ask representatives of the inn to present on this second rezoning request.
So similar to the other site, the parking lot, existing gravel parking lot behind that is currently right here. The existing gravel parking lot will be replaced with a new parking lot. And part of that is proposing, this is existing zoning line. This back half would be changed to be village mixed use, to be consistent with the front of the properties. Sorry about the split zone. This would make it all the same zone, all the same properties.
Thank you. I'm sure the planning commission will have questions for you when it comes to us. But for now, let me approach to the public again. I would ask you to limit your submission to four minutes if possible. Thank you.
I hope you had a chance to look at that video and the rest of it in the weather this morning of the dump trucks that arrived at 7:30. Good evening and thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. My name is Wendy Mudd, and I've lived in the town for over 20 years. I'm here tonight not just as a neighbor directly affected by the current rezoning application, but as someone who has cared deeply about the future of this community. I'd like to offer a few thoughts from that perspective, grounded in both personal experience and a long-term view. Over the past two decades, I witnessed a significant transformation in the town. One of the biggest catalysts was the construction of the wastewater treatment plant, which went online around 2009 to 10. Before that, several septic systems in the village, including one on Pughan Avenue, was failing. The treatment plant solved a real problem, and it opened the door for improvements, but it also enabled a scale it felt that simply wasn't possible before. For example, the fields behind, what is behind the car house, my house and brick house, that area was previously used as a septic field for the inn. These fields, which are now being considered for rezoning, are essentially undevelopable because of the system with the treatment plant in place, the limitations for improvement. And that has brought new challenges. I purchased my property prior to the treatment plant. Let me be clear, growth in itself isn't a problem. It's how we manage that growth, how we make decisions, not just based on what's possible, but on what's right for the community in the long term. I understand that this rezoning request is part of a broader vision for the inn's expansion. But what's missing in my view is a clearly articulated, long-range plan instead of decisions seeming to be made one person at a time with residents in the town left to respond reactively. That makes it very hard for neighbors to feel confident or for the town to protect the village's unique character. There's also a concern about enforcement and accountability. For example, in 2021, the rapid parking lot was constructed on a parcel currently zoned village residential that we're discussing here. That what happened without, in my opinion, proper approvals, yet it has remained in place since and I've experienced late night disturbances, bright lights, increased traffic, noise, and all of which is not in keeping with village residential zoning. When I raised concerns, I was resup, was surprised to receive an offer to purchase my home as it was a resolution to the situation. While perhaps well-intentioned, it didn't address the underlying issue, that zoning ordinances exist for a reason, and when they're ignored, it erodes trust. And trust is a key issue here. The town needs to be able to trust that any entity, whether it's a private owner or a longstanding business, will follow their rules set forth. And neighbors need to trust that the town is looking out for their well-being, not just in this moment, but for the future of the village. Almost done. Currently, the village mixed use zoning category lacks specifics when it comes to important issues like sepphets, buffers, lighting, noise, odors, and waste management. If these parcels are rezoned now, those issues will not be regulated, and the neighbors will have no recourse. I'm not here to propose progress. I'm here to advocate for a thoughtful planning. If the town believes that the V and U is the right designation for these parcels, then I respectfully ask that you take first the time to strengthen the V and U ordinance. Let's ensure it includes protection that preserve the integrity of this village and the well-being of all residents. This isn't just about one person or one business. It's about how we shape the legacy of this town. The towns can't change, and growth should not be the vision of one person. It should be done as a community with the input and discussion on how we change and grow, what kind of town we want to lead to the next generation. Let me make this, let's make this decision carefully and make sure our ordinances reflect the kind of community we've moved here for, the peaceful enjoyment of our property. Thank you very much, Liz.
Thank you. Yes, please, Joan Platt.
Thanks again. And I hope you enjoyed my convivial pictures. I cannot follow that. She did a great job, and pretty much everything she said is what I was going to add to. But what I would like to add is, if it possibly, if it's possible, this could be tabled because I literally just got the plan a couple of hours ago. And as I looked down at this plan, the parking lot is, the blue is my house, and you see behind it is the parking lot and trash compactor. And to say when I saw that, I was a little distressed because there's already noise back there. But the parking lot literally behind me with the trash compactor is a bit concerning. And is there a way, and like Wendy, I'm not against progress. You know, it's just where these things are located, and it is within the residential areas, surrounded by residents, and like our piece of fire, or at least I do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? The planning commission's close council. Yes.
Could you just, yes, my name is, I'm Sandra, and I'm the representative. As you can see on the conceptual map, and I believe you all each have it in front of you, this property, this second property, isn't new. From at least the 1950s, it's been a park.
There is a, we can keep that a little bit of some of our residential.
Yes.
I'm arguing that a little bit.
I shall.
And everybody can hear you.
From at least the 1950s, this area here has been a defective parking lot. There are aerial photographs that delineate the use of it as an automobile storage salvage, defective junkyard. So this isn't anything new. In fact, I would argue that it's actually an improvement, both environmentally as well as aesthetically. They have a clean parking lot. It's not a field where things are just dumped. And that's what it was. You had a automobile dealership slash garage in front of it for, I believe it was a Ford dealership, that had its vehicles back there. You had repair vehicles, vehicles waiting members to repair, as well as junk vehicles, parts vehicles. So this area has been utilized for parking for much worse purposes than what is being proposed by the inn today. The benefits far exceed any risk or possible harm. Where the spa is proposed is currently being used as parking for employees. The inn employs quite a few individuals in this town that contributes to the local economy of this town. They have to have some place to park. Employees tend to work in park on the streets. I think everybody here assembled can agree, they don't find 100 or 200 employees parking all over the streets of Washington, Virginia. If we consolidate that parking location to one area, as well as guests, and guests to other businesses in the town, as well as the church, that's a benefit. So that you're walking town, and if I'm not mistaken, it was the goal of Washington, Virginia, to become a town that's walker-friendly, pedestrian-friendly. That goal was better achieved with less traffic and parking out here on all of these roads than having people here. That's the purpose of this. Inn guests, restaurant guests, all of the gallery guests that come to your town have a safe, convenient parking lot, tree of casualties. There is a proposal, and in your packet, I believe, I'm not sure which graph it is, but it shows a weird grid. It's an underground water storage to capture runoff, et cetera, to prevent stream pollution and everything else. If you have all of these cars parking all over the streets of Washington, Virginia, you're going to have these vehicles dropping their fluids, et cetera, parked. Here, they're going to be in a parking lot with a controlled runoff and a retention area so that pollution or contaminants are controlled. On the streets, they're not. There are people that probably don't want a parking lot right next to them. And you saw a video this morning from this suburb. Nobody wants to wake up to a dump truck doing that. And I can assure you, we had, that my client had no idea there would sort of be a gravel delivery at 7:30 in the morning. But the reality of it is that construction people start their day earlier than the rest of us. I live in Front Royal. They wake up at 4:00 in the morning to go to work. This gentleman that delivered that gravel probably went to the quarry where, or the source of the gravel picked up, loaded, and it was probably his first delivery of the day. Someone's got to be first. But as soon as my client received the complaint today, they instituted a new policy telling all staff, all office managers, all areas of concern, the grounds, maintenance, whoever, do not allow any delivery before 9:00 AM. That's how we fix the problem. That's how the inn becomes, and it is a good neighborhood, and wants to be a good neighborhood.
Thank you.
75 trucks.
I'm sorry, I had to sort my, I had to people to format. I have to limit you to four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any more comments? And I'll close the public session, and we need to talk here.
Can I respond?
Or this is not the, yeah, this is not the sort of area for back and forth. We've got your, we've got your very good testimony that you've given us. And I think you can rely on the planning commission to respond for you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So if there are no more comments, I'm going to close the public hearing section and move to the discussion amongst the planning commission. And I'm going to exert the privilege of the chair by starting with a few questions. And we're not here to discuss the site plan. The discussion on the detailed site plan comes later. That said, in the instant mission, 309, this one, you do talk about future uses. You talk about additional parking. You talk about dumpster and trash. And you talk about the concrete storage, cement storage. So I really want to ask you a little bit about that. Our job of the planning commission and the town council is to really weigh a number of different needs. I think it's true to say, as our lawyer colleague said, the town has always placed a great preference for parking behind, behind the commercial areas, behind the residential areas off Main Street. That said, it's also about, two of our residents have their rights respected. So a number of que, I have three questions to come to my. The first is, I live opposite the existing spa parking lot, which is gravel and which I see you are planning to change to asphalt. An asphalt parking lot is a lot quieter and a lot less dusty than a gravel parking lot. So my first question would be, are you planning to put, remove the gravel and to put asphalt down at the back of it in this rezoning? That's my first question. I live next to the very large generator and across from the trash compactor, and both are quite noisy. I have long believed that it would be sensible and possible for the trash compactor, sometimes it smells, to be moved somewhere else, to 211, where you have the property there, to maybe down to some land by the wastewater. But to get it out of areas that are close to the residential areas and for your own carter house, it would make sense. It certainly does not make sense to have it up against a property line with a residence. And the third thing, I noticed walking around that area and is the barriers, the walls. You have now, and again, I know this isn't the time for the site plan, but I do think some agreement on these issues would be sensible to extend the fence along the property where the bamboo is. Or perhaps your plan is to have more wall there. So I would say these, those three. So I would say those three things would make pushing parking back there for residents... I don't speak for John and Wendy. They may make a sense by that. I think for the planning commission, it would give us a lot more comfort to see some movement in that direction. And over to my colleagues as well to hear from them.
So I would just add a person of lighting. I've walked in as well. And the points that Carolyn brought up are the same ones. The gravel needs to be asphalted and continually or making the barrier to the neighbors stronger. But I think lighting would be another potential issue.
I think matching direction comes before the ARB.
Oh, okay. So it's...
So that will be a separate discussion. David?
My question is the same as I had for the last parcel. And that's why is zoning changed, particularly here? And are there any uses that come granted with that zoning change? Do I just make a difference for this property now or in the future?
Good one, Stomper.
Just for your response. Yes.
So the asphalt and parking lot will be done. Asphalt and the Carter parking lot in both areas. It is quieter. It's easier to control runoff, dust and maintain. Honestly, snow removal will be low. Your second item, the dumpster trash compactor, we are going to be relocating. It will not be on the parking lot property. We're still working on a location for it, but it will not be on that property. As well as the landscape storage, it will be removed from this far corner. And we'll be able to be a team board on our parking closer to address the buildings that the Inn has. Barriers and fencing around the perimeter will be extending it to fully screen the parking lot in the same style as the current fencing is. Lighting, we plan to come back to, but it will be dark skies compliant. And then why is zoning changed?
Because zoning changes, since this is one single property, just to be consistent, so there's not splits on that property. So it's the neighborhood.
Steve, I understand it's also possible for additional strong lighting.
Yes, any detailed site plan can be reviewed by the EU preliminary discussions probably two or three months ago with the EU regarding strong lighting. But yes, it would be allowed in that area as part of the plan.
There's currently, yeah, there's some more than anything. We've had a PQ, like Steve said, two to three months ago. We're currently having a review of them, detailed technical review, computations and all of that stuff that's under going to review at their main office.
Thank you. And there will be, just for everybody's education, the site plan will come to all the bodies of the town, to the zoning administration, to the planning administration, to the town council, who are the final arbiters.
Ma'am Chair. Additionally, the Inn does anticipate having new trees and hedges, et cetera, as a perfect upper between the property.
Okay. All right. So let me ask my commissioners if we, having heard those things, we have a motion, are here to approve, disapprove, and table. Tom, there is that is going to be the area on the lighting only. And the site plan goes to my name and to the town council.
So this will move the site plan...
No, this is... This would take this approved. If we recommend, we're recommending to the town council that they approve. If they approve, the next step is the site plan.
And so over. And so over.
And the site plan, these details of parking spaces, location of...
And so that's where we will have specifics say on these items that we're bringing up.
Yes. And we wanted to lodge these three things. And here, from the Inn's response, what are those three? Those three, several of those things coming, come through in John Platt's comments.
Yeah, John. And just one thing I was wondering, is enhancing for the barriers to the neighbor's property, was that something that we did, would come up in the site plan? Right? And that is something you guys are...
Understand.
Understand. That's important.
We understand. In addition to...
Okay.
So as I understand, if they have committed here that the gravel will go, it will be asphalt.
Right.
There will be barriers extending from where they are now. I think that's in front of John Platt's house and along there. I'm not sure about the bamboo. And there will also be landscaping and a trash compactor. It will not be sighted on this area, anywhere on this area. And the concrete bins that are the monument are there now. The, in the corner, will be moved somewhere else. So those are the things the Inn has committed to do going forward.
Well, I think that covers, I'm going to give a few, that hits the list of things that we've been discussing. And I think that it's supposed to be with the adjacent neighbors that have been brought up. And then yet we have no chance to review it. So in that regard, I think in moving the process through, I would say recommend that we throw it to town council.
May I have a second? Yeah. Second one, is that? Okay, so the motion is that we recommend to the town council the... No, the motion is that in the light of the Inn's offer to move the trash compactor and asphalt the entirety or clarity and asphalt the entirety and build the barrier, both a landscaping barrier and a physical barrier between the residents and the place, we would recommend to the town council that the request of the Inn at New Washington to change the zoning for district category for the property at 309. Yes, 309 Main Street. Move from the current village residential, the art of village mixed use. The request is being considered in accordance with the Town of Washington zoning ordinance, Article 9 Amendment, Section 1, Paragraph 1.1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you, Mr. Matt. Thank you to all. Thank you, Asha, having closed officially closed the public hearing. And then, thank you. Thank you very much. Jay, you have to sit there.
Thank you. I'm going to see. And now I'm going to pass some folks to some of the representatives. I just need to say some of the things that we have shared with them. Thank you again to the planning commissioner for service tonight. But that will now open the agenda. I want to call it for the town. And that is request of the Inn of Washington LLC to give the address of Washington for 0.4 acres. It's change the zoning district category for property 371 and 389 Main Street, Washington, Virginia, Tax Map ID number 20A-1-15 and 20A-1-16 from the current local residential to village mixed use. Request is being considered in accordance with the Town of Washington zoning ordinance, Article 9 Amendment, Section 1, Paragraph 1.1C. Property is located in the rural residential historic zoning district categories.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think it's going to be in the part of...
I have a person.
You were just reading the market post as I expected.
We have to do that. That's why I say... I'm sorry. I'm waiting. That's why I say it's unlikely that he believes that I have to repeat it. It's part of our deliberations, my fault. With that, I will open it for public comment.
Open the public comment, yeah?
Yes. This is for the, this is for the piece of property associated with the spa.
In listening to the presentation, it seems to me that the conversation was switched from zoning, mixed use residence, rural residential mixed use, to site plan. Site plan and...
Again, we're dealing with a spa property.
Oh, the spa, sorry.
It's okay. It's confusing. Especially when you have the legal description around it and just say... So, any public comments about the spa property? Hearing done. I will close the public hearing and ask if the town council has any questions related to the spa property.
Thank you.
If there are no questions or discussions with the town council, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the question reselling.
Absolutely.
About a second? All in favor, please hit a 5. I say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That will take fairly appropriate paperwork for the rezoning of Tax Map, 28-1-15 and 28-1-16, also located at 371 and 389 Main Street. I will now open the public hearing.
Open the motion?
Yeah.
So balance of what A over B were over the head?
That's what I understand. Now I will open the public hearing on the request of the Inn of Washington LLC to give the address of the Inn of Washington for 2.0152 acres to change the zoning district category for the property at 309 Main Street, Washington, Virginia, Tax Map ID 20A-1-34, and part 20A-1-37A from the current village residential to village mixed use. Request is being considered in accordance with the Town of Washington zoning ordinance, Article 9 Amendment, Section 1, Paragraph 1.1C. The property is located in the village residential and historic zoning district categories. Comments from the public? And please seek approval and then please announce yourself again.
Uh, I think we're back in listening to the conversation. It seems to me that the conversation was switched from site plan, which is administrative, away from zoning, which is legislative. I believe that the issue should be solely focused on the legislative issue of zoning from village residential to mixed use. There are no clear defined regulations in mixed use for screening, borders, setbacks, noise, lighting. These all should be in our ordinance so that we can address this as a community, not simply piece by piece or meal by meal, but as a community as a whole, because this is going to come up again and again. So I think that the better course of action is to table this and make sure that we update our zoning so that we're not in this situation and having these discussions again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Platt?
Thank you very much. I just had a quick question. I was looking at the agenda. And the three properties are located on here, that's 309 Main Street, which is the Inn address. These are three locations by behind patios, the Carter House, and maybe the brick houses. And the other one, the hundred house. So I, that's just...
I don't want to mistake, but as I understand, there aren't actually addresses for those two properties.
Yeah. Because it was listed as like the Carter House patio, blah, blah, blah.
Absolutely. You get folks a geographic background, so.
I can even nitpick. I just got...
No, no.
I'm really confused on some of them. But also, I just wanted to agree with what Wendy said. It concerns me that, you know, with village mixed use, who knows what can happen? And so, what does flywalk mean? So anyway, that's a resident. I do have concerns about, you know, what's going to go on behind the house. It's noisy now. And then, and 75, although there were more parking lots and stuff. This is... Thank you.
Absolutely understand. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? And with that, I will close the public hearing. And the town council, if you have any comments and questions they'd like to present.
Well, one of the things that I didn't realize, to see in the preview, we're talking about village residential and historic zoning district. So we have a limited amount of historic zoning. And nothing in any of the documents in the paperwork seen addresses historic zoning. So that's one thing. The other thing, well, we've heard promises and such that the Inn will do this, they will do that. But there's nothing in our ordinance. And quite honestly, we have talked and we have tabled having our zoning administrator go through our ordinances, bring them up to date, make sure that it is current, and then include some of these issues for hearing tonight and things that... Again, this is one of them. We have another property somewhere else, and we're going to run into this again. I personally would rather see this table until our zoning ordinances can be updated, specific to some of these things such as setbacks, you know, putting a fence in, adding a bar for a parking lot, what post building can be to a parking lot, all these things. Because we've seen in town evidence of not having any of that and how it impacts on neighboring properties. So I would rather just wait than, as Inn says, we're going to do this or do that. They'll have a set of guidelines, of which they must be here, and then it's going to be carried out properly. Because I, you know, you can say, oh, I'm going to do this. And then, oh, the contract or key will be over two feet. So we don't really have teeth to say rip it out and put it where it's supposed to be. So it'd be nice to have those things down in black and white. So we have a good guideline. And I think Mr. Our zoning administrator, Mr. Patterson, will do a more than adequate job, fair job, incorporating those into our ordinance. And then we have a document or a series of documents that we can go forward with for other development in the town. We know that more things coming. I don't know if this is going to be significant to the spa development. That's all part of the Inn's ownership. But I think for any property that wants to be developed or modified, it can impact a neighboring property. It's only fair and right that we have those things in place. So I feel that this should be tangled until we have that. And then, then we can say, yes, no, it's okay. We'll go ahead and approve it otherwise. Because again, effectively, I'm not opposed to development improvements in the town. But I want to make sure that we order to study our town. So I would say let's hold this off. We, in our council meeting... We, in our council meeting, could offer a just comparison to go forward, make those changes with experience. Because I understand the in is urgent to get things underway. But again, let's do it right. So my opinion is let's table this.
I have to agree with what you're feeling. I'm not against it. I just, there are some loose things I need to be kind of.
I think after table that too, although not for as long as we're to clarify the ordinances. And I think then we're talking months and months of hope of progress in this project. So I think like Jamie said about just getting two hours ago, you know, proposal that we, maybe they have time to see a proposal and think about it or talk about it. So I would say table it for sure.
Well, could we ask our zoning administrator to, they would be in our ordinances, but maybe reviewing or with his knowledge. Here's a series of recommendations of things that would likely lead to it so that it can be guided for the site plan. Is that reasonable? Because that way we don't have to wait for all review, weekly process.
I don't know that we, I don't see any reason we couldn't do that. However, I would, just going to, there's no reason that we can't deal. There's no reason we can't deal with that and have his advice as we work through this second part of this process, which is when the site plan comes to us for review. You know, we can do that all concurrent with actually moving forward with the approval that will happen to happen next. And actually, one of the comments I wanted to leave off, but personally just to put out that what happens next is not, it's not an administrative process. I know it's been described that way. What happens next is a legislative process because this body will have to vote multiple times. They appointed bodies who provide recommendations. So it's will have to vote multiple times to approve whatever is instructed on this effort. So I wanted to be clear about that. There will be ample time for debate and review of whatever is done on this site. When it does come to the ordinances, you know, I may differ a little bit here to say that, you know, they are intentionally vague for a reason, right? We could spend all, we could all spend the rest of our lives debating the particulars and not come up with every corner case that would happen. So we sort of all decide that there's a corpus of things that we don't want to see happen in these places. And then the rest is left to us as elected officials or appointed officials to help decide if I have to park me. I understand. So I'm a little leery of trying to get too specific with them, though I agree it's, you know, I think we've all, I think we've read in the budget this year to appropriate some money to start to address that issue just to smarten them up. Because I think their place works a little too tight. We all agree it's too tight and it takes a lot of our time to deal with things that we've all re, or administered. And there are other cases where we would like to direct a little more review. I'd also point out, like, I do agree that historically, the town is not that particularly good about enforcement. I think we took a very good step in that right direction by, you know, taking the first step in enforcement when the action has not followed quite as quickly as I would like with that pack and shed enforcement and change of hands a bit by, or invoking demolition by neglect. We may have to have another conversation about that enforcement in the near future for faulty progress. But, you know, so I think that, you know, Steve is no guilty willy and certainly shouldn't have had any debates with our town or whatever about where things being installed, just as they're advertised, everything landscape to curbs to water lines as well. So I think, you know, the current group of advisors that we have at the town and town government is not, you know, we're not, and the zoning ordinance doesn't make very, very clear that enforcement mechanisms that we have to include the fines that we impose, if they do not follow on the construction as we, that's what we're directed. That all said, one thing I did mention earlier is just, you know, we did accept for the record two letters that were received from Ms. Platt and Ms. Murdock. We did also receive a letter in favor of the NFP. That will also be added into the record. As far as the way forward for tonight, I do understand that all three parties involved at the end has approached the two neighboring property owners about the possibility of finding some accommodation on the way forward. And they only just started that discussion yesterday. What I would like to recommend in this is partially to ensure that this is not, you know, we continue to provide quick responses to applicants. What I would like to suggest is that we continue tonight's meeting, Monday night, the 21st, allow for any negotiations that are going to happen between property owners, the three property owners involved to play out. But then on Monday night, we will meet and we will make a decision one way or another. That's what I would like to recommend to the council. We'll be here in September. Having the same luck. Can I consider that a second?
Yes.
So I would recommend that we continue tonight's meeting. We meet on Monday, 21st at seven o'clock. Or 23rd, sorry. I said it's another, I just came out of the chair. On the 23rd at seven o'clock, we will end up. I think in fact, they are leaving slightly, but I think we can dispense with this relatively quickly. And we will hear whatever has been considered. And we will consider the, I think we will also take into consideration that time whenever the in presents their not-site plan with things that they are agreeing on record, that they will carry out as part of any potential construction on it. So have you made a motion, having a second? Ask for a vote on that.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
With that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. I'm sorry. We will continue the meeting until we're finished for tonight. We'll see you at seven o'clock on Monday night.